Hello.
How are we?
As much as you can. Water. Lot of his flavor in it.
Oh, really?
It's probably got all kinds of chemicals.
I can't drink, I don't feel anything because I'm like completely numb.
I would probably dribble it down my ass.
I'm probably gonna... Good night! No. Huh? Uh huh. I forgot about that. Really?
Are your kids out?
We got kids.
Things are coming after the burrs.
On Facebook.
You got a lot of business to handle.
I just want to let everybody know, I have to clap because we're recording audio and video separate, so when we start, don't freak out when I clap really loudly, okay? I don't want you to jump out of your chairs thinking something's going on here.
You don't want us to join you?
No, it needs to be one loud clap, so that way it'll sink. You know when they do the clappy thing with video?
Clap on, clap on.
Ready?
Six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order.
Guys, Nance, Sal, Ricky Wilson, Cheryl Taylor West, Sam Pierce.
Here.
All are present, we have a forum.
Line item three, invocation.
Lord, thank you for the city council and leaders at every level in our city. Give them grace, bring truth, justice, and stability to our region. Give them power to do what is right and to rule in fairness. May our community be known for its justice. Let it always prosper from the influence of good men and women. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag and pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Line item five. We're gonna go in at public comments at 6:01. Public comments and recede petitions at this time. Anyone will be allowed to speak on any matter other than personnel matters. Any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere on the agenda or matters under litigation for a length of time not to exceed four minutes. No council, board discussion, or action may take place on a matter until such matter has been placed on an agenda and posted in accordance with the law, Texas Government Code Section 551.042. We have Amy Teal.
Hi, guys. I have been accused by some of pursuing a personal agenda as I speak up about government spending and legal processes in our little community of Whitney. I'm allegedly not positive enough and not listening. Last year, we watched an elderly gentleman plead with the city for tax relief. I listened. I saw the notices regarding city liens on properties in the city threatening $2,000 a day fines on residents. Those aren't positive. I listened to the city repeatedly lie about what the ordinances do and do not say. Lying isn't positive. I listened to information being shared at the last second during a public hearing. Gatekeeping, not positive. I watched the city spend 48 grand on cameras for this facility when there are more prudent ways to mitigate the concerns. I am watching the city send simple information requests to expensive attorneys in Fort Worth. Bloating the budget, not positive. Thank you, though, for finally correcting the city's website. It now reads, "The tax rate will effectively be raised by 18.7694 percent and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately $102.80." I listened to the city finally adopt a minimal homestead exemption just in time for grandstanding during election season. Grandstanding is hardly positive, but that small savings is objectively important in a city with a median household income of $37,000. Wise as serpents, raise their taxes by another hundred bucks and give them back about 30 via a timely exemption. Cheerleaders are a dime a dozen. It is easy to praise the status quo. It is not convenient to speak up against injustices when you know you might be the next victim of a government entity weaponizing their codes and ordinances against political opposition. Telling people the harder truths that they do not want to hear just isn't considered positive. But it is something I have been equipped to do for the last two decades as I served, watched, learned, researched, and testified before multiple taxing entities at the city, school, county, and state levels, as well as within our statewide and national Republican Party convention process. And it is why, according to this email sent out by the mayor's assistant, every official the mayor talks to knows of this woman. Whitney is my home now. These decisions y'all are making impact me, right now. But I've actually been informally listening to people in this community since Gary bought his house here in 2019. Residents deserve honest, timely information of how their hard-earned tax dollars are spent. Our voters might not all be big-city-rich folks, but they are, for the most part, folks who prefer the benefits that a small town provides without the big-city rat race. Texas state law enshrined the right of public information into statute long before I was ever born, and people calling for tax relief goes back hundreds of years all around the world. These are not personal agendas. They are historical ones that our state and federal government are reviewing right now in bills to expand property tax relief, defend property rights from local government tyrannies, and rein in spending via Doge committees. These are public agendas for protecting liberties that need to be implemented right here in our little town of Whitney. In support of these historic principles to defend life, liberty, and property, I am formally announcing my campaign as Amy Teal for Whitney City Council. But whether I win or lose, I will continue to practice political transparency and increase voter engagement in our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Diane Wyatt.
My name is Diane Wyatt. I live at 201 North Colorado Street. Good afternoon to everyone. I'm not here as an expert on anything. Nothing. What I'm here for is to ask for more transparency in our meetings regarding a lot of things that are going on. For instance, I have read recently a bad, I'm not gonna, I don't know the proper word to use, but a report of sorts that our kennels are not properly handled, and there's an issue with the person that's supposed to be in charge of it, the nonprofit organization. Yet I have not heard anything in several meetings regarding how that is going on. I don't know what is legal in a city council meeting or not, but I do have experience with corporate and homeowners associations. And when something is tabled, it stays on the agenda, and you should give an update each meeting on anything that you have tabled. I have asked who the person is that is manning the city council page, because some people, they answer questions and some people, they don't. And that's not a fair playing field. You either answer the questions or you don't. Nobody has ever answered me of who is posting that position. I would also like to address the newspaper, if they're here, I hope they're here, that when they report on these meetings, most of the time, they do not say anything about people that speak. They put everything that the council is doing, but they don't address the speakers. And I think that the speakers have a right to be part of the meeting as well. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Time out at 6:08. Consent agenda, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. Should a council member desire discussion of any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Line item six, act on approving the regular city council minute meetings for the regular meeting of February 20, 2025, and for the special meeting on February 27, 2025. Line item seven, act on approving the City of Whitney expense report and register report for February 20, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Department reports. Mayor presenting awards.
On January 16, 2025, our EMS responded to a call at Brookshires where resuscitation was needed. Our EMS transported this patient to the hospital, then back to rehab, and our suspect, our patient, is now home and assisting living. So we wanted to give a CPR save award to Robert Matthews.
Okay. Vera Bisquick?
Sarah.
Vera?
Sorry, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jason Burr? Thank you. And Megan Lehman?
She's a employee, so she's enjoying her job pretty.
So we'd like to thank these for CPR saves. Those CPR saves don't happen very often, y'all.
Administration report.
Mayor, council, I wanted to give you an update on where we stand with the CDBG grant and applications or the project information forms to the Texas Water Development Board. Initially, so we've talked about with the CDBG that we were gonna identify drainage and roads as our priorities to spend the money. So part of the CDBG thing is the engineers have to give you what's called an opinion of probable costs. And that's not what it's going to cost, that's what they think it could cost. So that way, we know how to allocate or look at projects. We talked about different areas of the town specifically that have drainage problems and roads, and the priority came up to be the Duane Circle, Chad, and D area, East Beth Street, because if we get a half-inch of rain, it floods over there. So we targeted that area. In the initial opinion of probable cost, just for the Duane Circle area for drainage and the road was gonna be in the neighborhood of $700 and some odd thousand dollars. So we had a face-to-face meeting with the engineers, they came back down, we went out and I took them down, put boots on the ground, and walked around the whole area. The engineers thinks that the best course of action is to start at the bottom at Chad and work our way up, right? Because water has to be able to flow down, you don't want to start upstream. So I want to give you some ideas of what this looks like it could cost, okay? Because $750,000, while we are super grateful to get that grant, in 2025, $750,000 doesn't do a lot, okay? So I'm gonna give you kind of what we're looking at as far as, now, again, this is just me giving you a briefing, we're not making decisions, there's no discussion to be had here, this is just letting you, giving you an idea of what could happen. Things in 2025 are very, very expensive. And roads are one of those things. So just to give everyone an idea, just the channel excavation, the opinion of probable cost on West Chad Avenue, just the excavation for the drainage, $405,000. Same thing on Texas. Texas street drainage, $348,000. Chad Avenue drainage, $577,000. D Avenue, $471,000. East Beth Avenue, $435,000. Duane Circle, $528,000. Now we get into the road construction. So that's just your drainage, opinion of probable cost for drainage in that area. Two lanes, 12-foot on Texas Street, $128,000. Chad Avenue, full reconstruction, $476,000. D Avenue, full reconstruction, $295,000. East Beth Avenue, $292,000. Duane Circle, $342,000. So if you add all of those together, and you do not take a systematic approach to this, we're looking at $4.3 million for one little area of town. So when we look at doing roads and we look at doing things and people think that we're not looking at this, this stuff is very expensive. We have to figure out how to fund this. So we will be coming to you very soon to say, how much money are you, as the city, as the council, wanting to put towards this $750,000 to improve that area? Obviously, we can get one done with the grant money. So, you know, we have to tell the engineering firm by April 2nd where we want to spend this money, where we want this project to start. You've lived here long enough to know, that whole place over there is a disaster when it rains. So it's very important, because again, this grant has to go to a low-income area. So 51% of the target area has to meet the low-income standards. So that kind of gives you an idea of what that is gonna look like for drainage and road improvements. All right, so next thing is, we put in our project information forms to the Texas Water Development Board, and I'm excited to tell you that all of our PIFs have been accepted. That means that we are going to the next round, which they will then either invite us or reject us. So I just want to tell you all the things that we, as the city, have submitted for through the Texas Water Development Board, because there seems to be a lot of miscommunication or misconception about what we're trying to do and what we're looking at doing. So let me just go ahead and clear up that misinformation. Whitney Elevated Storage Tank, that's a new water storage tank, for those that don't know what that is. Whitney Wastewater Treatment Plant. Whitney Wastewater Study. City of Whitney Water System Improvements. City of Whitney Wastewater Collection and Treatment Improvements. Those are projects that have been accepted by the Texas Water Development Board, the project information forms, and we're hoping to get invited to the next round on that. That is really good news for us. So we're looking at a 70% loan forgiveness on that, and most of the time, if you meet that certain threshold for income again, you don't pay back the other 30% either. There's, you know, there's stipulations up and down, but we're hoping that we get to do this, and we're gonna make these infrastructure upgrades that have been long overdue, since the last 15 years, nothing's happened in this town. In the last two, we've had to get the audits up. We couldn't do any of this until the audits were all caught up. So we're caught up, we're making headway, we're laying the groundwork to get this town at least to 2010, because it's gonna take a while to get to 2025.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Department of Emergency Services.
Honorable Mayor and council members, so we ran accidentally on the EMS side, it says 59, but we actually ran 49, that's my big finger typo. So we ran 48 calls in the city. We did run one call out in the county covering Care Flight when they didn't have an ambulance available. Our average response time in the city was five minutes, and our one call out in the county was six minutes. It was actually at the helicopter base out there. On the fire side, we're a little bit busier, we ran 88 calls. Four fire calls were in the city, 13 fire calls were out in the county, 42 first responder calls with the ambulance was in the city, and 29 were out in the county. So our call volume seems to keep going up each month since I've taken this job, so we're keeping up with the staffing and all that. We have started our safety surveys. We started on the very end of North Brazos, working our way back. We've done 10 surveys, we've knocked out most of the restaurants out there on North Brazos, and we're fixing tomorrow or Monday, go from Brookshires and continue back into the city.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, thank you. Police and Code Enforcement Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. In February, Police Department responded to approximately 211 calls for services, disturbances, motor vehicle crashes, warrant arrests. We did make a total of four arrests, a total of 80 traffic stops, including 88 warnings and citations. Christine Holt did accept her position with the Police Department, she's currently working and handling a lot of the criminal investigations, which she's used to doing. During the course of the investigation, we're actually working in active organized crime ring that's going on, coming from Fort Worth down here, basically using local business names, writing fraudulent checks. We've been able to identify at least six suspects in that, which is great, and hopefully we'll be issuing warrants here soon to try to find them and get them off the street. Other issue that is occurring, as everyone knows, probably Drew Youngblood, ACO, also Code Enforcement, is no longer with the city. So the Police Department, we've kind of taken over the aspects of animal control and Code Enforcement at this time. I'm working right now, trying to figure out policy-wise with animal control, Code Enforcement going forward. I know we have our temporary kennel set up down there, we're currently using those for dangerous dog cases, any type of animal bites where we have to quarantine an animal, and then it's just a case-by-case at this time, until we can figure out what our long-term plan is going to be. So any other questions at all or any concerns?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Public Works.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For February, we had five water leaks. Mr. Priville already covered our grant submission. Thank you, you did a very good job on that. After hours calls, we had eight sewer calls and 10 water calls. And that's all I have for you this month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Library Report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, citizens. I want to take a moment to highlight the library's role as a third place in our community. In urban planning and sociology, a third place is a space outside of home, where your family is and work, where your work family is, where people can gather, connect, and build relationships. Libraries are one of the few truly free and inclusive third places left, open to everyone, regardless of age, background, or income. So in this urban third place, or rural third place, last month, we saw 1,022 visitors, with 245 attending the programs designed to bring people together. From our new Skillshare series and wellness programs to family nights and community clubs, the library is this place where people can learn, engage, and connect. Beyond those gatherings, our social media engagement has skyrocketed, up 1,240% since October, showing that our impact extends beyond our walls and that people are seeing the programs coming to the library in person and online, and making it a hub of activity and connections. As I always say, libraries are not just about books, they're about people, community, and shared experiences. And as we continue to expand these programs and have more people come into those programs, attend them, we are expanding the community and those connections. So stay tuned for news on more outreach sessions next month. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Municipal Court Report.
Up in the municipal court, for the month of February, we had 78 citations written and a total collection of $2,433.03.
Thank you. Moving to our regular agenda, line item eight, hold a public hearing to establish a school crossing zone on both directions of Wildcat Drive, beginning at the intersection of FM 933 and ending 2,540 feet northeast of where Wildcat Drive intersects with FM 933, and to consider pre-bifashia speed limit on all school zones in the city. Does anybody have anything to say on the Wildcat Drive?
Mayor, let me give some background on this. So one of the things that we have to do to establish a school zone is, it's a multi-step process. One of the things is, went to the school board, last school board meeting, they requested that the city hold the public hearing. We had to do a traffic study, which we've done, and then we have to hold a public hearing. So what we're looking to do here is, Wildcat Drive by the intermediate and high school, establish a school zone. This request came from not only the school, but also in collaboration with the Commissioner Holcomb, who's been getting a lot of phone calls for it. So in order to do this by the transportation code, we have to have a public hearing. So now's the opportunity for anybody to voice concerns and/or make comments about the proposed school zone on Wildcat, excuse me, Wildcat Drive.
Are there any comments?
Please come to the podium.
Madam Mayor, honorable councilmen, my name's Debbie Gregory, I live at 500 North Angelina Street. When I moved here to Whitney, I lived out by the river, and I would bring my children to San Jacinto to these schools. I was very taken back by the fact that there's no crosswalks, and the children just went willy-nilly around across the roads wherever, and it was terrifying to me. So I went to Dr. Otten, who I knew before I'd ever moved here, and I asked him, and he went to Mr. Teal and different ones, and he came back to me and said that there cannot be a crosswalk because we do not have curbs. I'm like, so then I found out that's also the reason we can't have our mail delivered like other small cities, and we have to have the curbs. So is that the same situation that's gonna be out there? Do we, I mean, I know this is about the traffic, you know, and I'm just wondering if we're ever gonna grow up to the place we take care of our children first by having crosswalks and guards and all that? That's all, okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else have anything to say? Come out of the hearing at 6:25. Line item nine, deliberate and act on ordinance number 2025-0301, amending Chapter 12 Traffic Vehicles in the Code ordinances to establish a school zone on both directions of Wildcat Drive, beginning at the intersection of FM 933 and ending 2,540 feet northeast of where Wildcat Drive intersects with FM 933 during the hours of 7:15 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. and 2:30 p.m. to 4 p.m.
Council, I need to call out an error on the, it's not an error, it's an omission on page two of the ordinance. You'll notice the highlighted area there in yellow, it should have 2,540 feet inserted there. We do have the corrected ordinance, but if you make a motion, please make your motion with that correction to the ordinance. This ordinance will establish a 20 mile an hour school zone on Wildcat Drive for those 2,540 feet.
I make a motion to approve amending Chapter 12 Traffic Vehicles, establish school zone both directions of Wildcat Drive, beginning at the intersection of FM 933 and ending at 2,540 feet northeast.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item 10, deliberate and act on ordinance number 2025-0302, amending Chapter 12 Traffic and Vehicles in the Code of Ordinances. amending chapter twelve traffic and vehicles in the code of ordinances to establish a thirty-five miles per hour speed limit on Wildcat Drive, County Road twelve forty, in the corporate limits.
This comes directly from the speed study. As I mentioned at the school board meeting when I spoke to them, what they do is they take the average number of cars and the speed that they're traveling down that road and they factor that in. Then they take like the eighty-ninth or eighty-fifth percentile and come up with a number. Initially, the engineers came up with forty-five miles per hour, and in discussions with them, and knowing that the county is going to be establishing a thirty-five mile per hour zone on their end of the road, we didn't want to create a little drag strip for two-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty feet where people could accelerate. So, the engineers agreed that thirty-five miles per hour was more reasonable, and that's what the traffic study now reflects. So, this is the ordinance adopting a thirty-five mile per hour speed limit for Wildcat Drive.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve amending chapter twelve at thirty-five miles an hour.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Line item eleven, deliberate and act on authorizing the mayor to write a letter of support to the Hill County Lake Whitney Lions Club for improvements to the old tennis court property located on West Cleveland Avenue. And that is the Hill County, Hill County, Whitney, Texas Lions Club has requested a letter of support for their grant applications so they can start fundraising efforts for the tennis courts and the playground renovation. And we're asking that the city, that the council gives us permission to write a letter of support so they can start on some grants.
I want to make it clear that this is not obligating the city to do anything. We're not financially obligated to do anything. This is simply the council authorizing the mayor to submit a letter for support for this Lions Club to go out for grants.
Well, I'll make a motion then to authorize the mayor to write a letter of support to the Hill County Lake Whitney Lions Club for improvements to the old tennis court property.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Line item twelve, deliberate and act on accepting the twenty-twenty-three audit reports.
All right, Counsel, so this is the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three audit. This is when we had the change of command with the mayor that year. We had eight months under Mayor Barker, which we did not have a city administrator or anything in four months with the mayor. And then I came on board in July. So, I'm trying to put you back in the mind of timeframe of when this audit was for. The auditors came up, you're going to want to look on page twelve. The net fund change balance for the general fund was negative three-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars, or three-hundred-and-sixteen, seven-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars. When you have somebody that believes they have carte blanche, that's what happens. And then on page fifteen, the change in net position for the water and sewer fund came up with a negative one-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. So, that one, the budget was way overestimated for revenues. We also had the old water meters, which we've replaced because most of them were not functioning correctly and they were under-reading. And also just the expensive supplies going way up. So, the results are what they are.
Motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three audit results.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Line item thirteen, deliberate and act on authorizing the mayor to enter into negotiations with Emergency Services District One, ESD One, to establish a new contract. We want to enter into a negotiation with ESD One to create that new contract that benefits both the city and the county. A contract has not been established yet, but we wanted to negotiate, was it like supplies and, no, that wasn't right.
So, if you recall, we about two years ago backed out from ESD One. ESD One is for the Fire Service District of Whitney. Because they wanted us to sign a new contract stating that they would own the equipment that Whitney owned. Well, our taxpayers paid for that dollar, not the ESD District. Therefore, we got out of that contract. However, there's some leadership changes there. I've been talking with them for several months now about us entering back into ESD One, and I, they completely understand our position on this. This isn't committing to a contract, this is just authorizing us to enter into negotiations. Because what I would like to do is be a contractor of ESD One, so they pay us a lump sum. So, I've got some things up my sleeve that I've already laid out for them and they're on there for it. But we have to even start the negotiations to go there. This is to pay for everything that's outside corporate city limits that our fire department pays, responds to, the volunteer fire department.
Well, I make a motion that authorizing the mayor to enter into negotiations with the Emergency Service District One, to establish a new contract.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Vicky Wilson, second from Sam Pierce, all in favor?
Aye.
Line item fourteen, deliberate and give guidance regarding the permitting committee update presentation.
I should have brought a bigger bottle of water. Okay, so, Counsel, if you recall, around July of last year, we established a permitting committee to revamp our permitting process. That permitting committee consists of two council members, several of our general contractors in town, as well as myself, our permitting clerk and the mayor. We presented something to you about three or four months ago, and we've diligently been working on the feedback we received from there. Initially, we had talked about doing a general work permit and then a complete permit. The general work permit would have had no cost to anybody. And it was just to lay out if you needed an inspection or a report. So, we're also currently seeking a new inspector, inspection company outside of what we currently have. Because a lot of our inspections and permitting process come from them. So, we're trying to streamline that. So, what we did is we took your feedback and we established what you have in front of you. A lot of the things that happened, because contrary to popular belief, you don't have to have a permit to paint. So, that is not a thing. That is, again, misinformation. So, let me say this, the council and the, or the committee, a lot of the things that we determined would constitute needing a permit would be structural changes, not cosmetic changes. So, for instance, if you follow the flow charts that you have in your packet, we tried to make a process where you can follow it, and I'm going to tell you what, my six-year-old son can understand it. So, if they can understand it, anybody should be able to understand it. We tried to oversimplify this process. Again, what we did here, like we mentioned in the last one, there's never been an appeals process to permitting. So, you either needed a permit or you didn't. And there was no ifs, ands or buts about it. What we did is, we wrote in an appeals process that if the permitting clerk says you need a permit, and you do not believe you need one, it then goes to the building official for review. The building official is appointed by the council. If then, that building permit official says, yes, you do in fact need a permit, and you still do not believe you need one, it can come to the council at the next regularly scheduled council meeting and the council has ultimate say. So, it's a checks and balance, there's a multi-level appeals process, and I don't know how this gets any simpler than this. I don't know. You have it in front of you, I'll be happy to entertain questions that you might have. This is not an action item. This is a discuss and give, I need back, I need information to take to the committee, of two of which are on this council, to refine this process. Because my next step is, if you have nothing, I would like to go on a trial basis at our next meeting, say, let's try this for six months and see if it works. Let's, you know, go from there. And if you, guess what, if you don't have to have a permit, it doesn't cost you a thing.
So, my question would be, what are the costs of the permit?
The costs of the permits are established in the fee schedule that the council votes on every October. So, if there's something, now, that's what we set for permits as the city. If it's an inspection that goes to Bureau Veritas, which is our current inspection company, it's based off of square footage, and there's a lot more involved in the process of how much a permit costs. I'll give you a real good example. The O'Reilly's that's coming to this town that we've been so anxiously waiting on just filed for their building permits today.
Finally.
So, those permits were nine thousand dollars, but it's based off of the commercial building, what they're building, and those are all fees from Bureau Veritas, not the city. Let me make that clear. So, it just depends. It's a new construction of a commercial building, and it's based off their fees. Which is, again, why the city is seeking a new inspection company. Is, are there any questions I can answer about the process or what it looks like? Do you have any pinch points, concerns? Let's hash this out, I'm really excited. We've been working on this a very long time, and there have been countless hours put into this to try to make this easier. Because one of the biggest questions that's always been confusing for everybody is, do we need a permit or do we not? That's not fair to anybody. That's not fair to our citizens, it's not fair to our staff, it's not fair to anyone, because it's been confused. So, I want this to be as crystal clear as possible. And if it's confusing, please tell me.
It looks real simple, but I want to ask, did you do some comparisons with some other permitting processes, processes to just kind of determine how closely aligned we are with others?
I can't tell you then, amount of cities that we looked at. We took cities, type A general law, as well as home rule cities, we took the best of everything that we thought. And initially, that's where we came up with the general work permit, because we really liked that idea. So, that concept was, I don't know if I need a permit, it costs you no money at all. You fill out the general work permit, you submit it to the permitting clerk, then she says yes or no. But that idea was rejected. So, that's what, to put us back to the general, or to the drawing board here, and we just kind of combined everything and just tried to say whether you need a permit or you don't.
And there's no sense in reinventing the wheel when you can use some of the work already done in other communities.
Right, well, these flow charts are designed to break it down Barney style, big crayons, big chief tablets.
Y'all did a good job there, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Yeah, and I just wanted to keep it simplified. And if we had a permit for every little thing that we tried to do, nothing would get done.
Right.
And so, I didn't want everybody to get permitted to death. So, that's why we simplified it this way, and it's, it looks good.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things, and it's a common misconception, right? The misconception is that the city is trying to stymie development or remodels, and that's the exact opposite. We have rules, and if there's a rule, you're going to have to follow it. That's why we're trying to revamp this. So, if you have a commercial building in town, which we'll get to later, you have to have an asbestos survey. And guess what, that's a state law, that's not an us law. So, we didn't write that into our permitting process. So, we really went to, does it involve the structure? Does it need an inspection? That was where we really came, is this cosmetic or is this structural? Does it need an inspection or does it not? That's kind of where we got back to with inspections. Because if somebody wants to put shutters on their house, they shouldn't have to have a doggone permit. If somebody wants to put new windows in their house and they're just replacing a window for a window and not changing a frame, not changing anything structurally, it's the same size, why do we have to have a doggone permit? We don't. This right here breaks it down. If you're going to put a larger window in and change the shape, size or whatever of your structure, then yeah, you're going to have to have a permit. But if you're simply upgrading your windows, you don't have to have a doggone permit. We're trying to, again, Barney style, man, that's an army saying, break it down Barney style. Make it to where anybody can understand it. And I'm telling you, if my kid can follow this flow chart and understand it, I believe anybody can. Because that kid's got ADD like you wouldn't believe.
Well, I think, I think it's excellent.
I do too.
Like a, like a five-year-old kid can understand that.
That's right.
That's right, Wesley.
Okay, so, if the, if I'm hearing from the council that you're okay with proceeding with what is in front of you, and you like what you see, then we need to know that so we know what the next step is for us, because that means revamping some ordinances. And if you want to do it on a trial basis, you know, I think that's a good way to do this, let's try it for six months. That six months gives us the opportunity to assess whether it's working or not, and then we make some changes. But, I kind of need that from you guys, I need to know what to do.
People can till their gardens in their yard without a permit?
Yeah.
Twice this week I've been asked.
A garden never requires a permit.
Well, obviously, that's a flexible plan if you're willing to start with one path and see if it needs revision down the road. I don't see anything wrong with that.
Right.
I agree.
Simple Gumby, always flexible, you have to, you have to.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Line item fifteen, deliberate and act on asbestos survey quotes for property located at one-fifteen, one-seventeen West Washington Avenue. I don't have, oh, yes, I do. I'm sorry. We have received two quotes for performing the asbestos and mold inspections. And they are in here, the one-fifteen, the quote from ESESIS. The total proposed cost for one-fifteen West Washington Avenue was one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. Total proposed cost for one-seventeen West Washington Avenue is one-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty dollars. From MSC Environmental, we have a quote, he gave a quote of, I'm not sure what that.
He did a combined quote.
He did a, why did he break it down, twenty-six hundred dollars for both.
Counsel, I want you to know that we didn't have to go out for bids for this because of the level of the money, but we did advertise for this openly in the newspaper, online, and we received two back. So, these are the ones you have. The total for the ESIES, if in case you're wondering, is three-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. And the MS, MSE is twenty-six hundred dollars. And again, any public commercial building that is going to go through a remodel per state law has to have an asbestos survey.
That's just the survey, not any kind of repair or anything?
There's this remediation, this is the survey. This is to tell us if there's any in there and what needs to be done about it.
I make a motion to approve on the survey, asbestos survey.
For MSC or?
Yes.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You need, like my, like my street, Colorado Street?
What, Wesley?
You know, the, whenever it rains, it, and it floods, the water come back in to the house.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you.
We'll look at that, Wesley, thank you.
Line item sixteen, deliberate and act on ordinance, twenty-five oh-three oh-three, amending chapter thirteen utilities to adopt the new twenty-twenty-five drought contingency plan.
Comments, anybody?
Okay, so, this is something that we have to update every five years. Every five years, the drought contingency plan are, is supposed to be updated. I just want to go and let everyone know that this ordinance has not been touched since nineteen ninety-one. So, this is yet another example of what this administration is doing to try to uncover these things and fix them. So, for five years, we have, you know, every five years, we need to be doing this. Happy to say, we just had a TCQ water inspection and everything went good. But this is part of one of the things that we have to do every five years to make sure that, we live in Texas and it doesn't rain a lot sometimes. Or it rains a lot. But we have to have a drought contingency plan. Our water system operator sent us a copy of what it looked like per, pretty much right off the TCQ's website. We made some changes to fit our water system, and this is what you have in front of you.
Please let me, let me. I know the audience has laughed before when I said water and sewer is my passion. I come from a long, we have done many drought contingency plans, and the state does require. require it. If you get any funding later on, you must already have in place a drought contingency plan. A lot of you are gonna think, well, we've got a great big lake, why should we need water? We're in a drought right now, right? So may I please be honored to say I would like to, uh, adopt ordinance number 2025-0303, amending chapter 13 utilities to adopt the new 2025 drought contingency plan.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All yes.
Okay. Line item 17, deliberate, am I right there? Okay. My numbers are off here. Deliberate and act to add Jerry's towing and recovery to the city of Whitney's rotation list.
Guess I can talk about this one. So, uh, basically Jerry's towing, put in a, uh, service permit application to the city of Whitney to be added to the tow list. Uh, I've reviewed the application and all his supplemental documents, and I don't see any reason why they cannot be added to the rotation list, so.
I mean, he's in rotation, right?
Uh, currently, well, there's two, so this'll be the third. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So who all, who are all three, who are all the other two?
Currently, we have Speedway Towing, Absolute, and then Jerry's Towing would be the third.
I make a motion that we add Jerry's towing and recovery to the city of Whitney's rotation list.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Line item 18, deliberate and act to approve a replat of property legally described as lot one, R3 and 1R4 Block C, Country Village Edition, generally located 915 East Chad Avenue.
Counsel, both the, um, 18 and 19 I've reviewed, um, they match, meet our subdivision ordinances for subdivision of property. There's nothing that, uh, I have comment on, um, it's just a formal action that you have to approve, um, both of which are going to be a single-family home, uh, being built on them. Um, one over here is on Bush Drive, where they're already building the homes, and the other is over on Chad, um, and they're gonna be building two there as well. Again, these replats do meet all of our subdivision regulations, so there's nothing, nothing aga, uh, going against it.
Can we make a motion to the two together or separate? Okay. So I make a motion that we deliberate and act to improve a replat of property legally described at lot 1R3 and 1R4 Block C, Count, Country Village Edition, generally located at 915 East Chad Avenue.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item 19, deliberate and act to approve a replat of proper, property legally described as lot five and six, Block one, Ivors Edition, generally located in the 400 block of South San Marcos.
I make a motion that we approve a replat of property legally described at lot five and six, Block one, Ivors Edition, generally located in the 400 block of South San Marcos Avenue.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item 20, deliberate and act on authorizing the mayor to execute an internal services agreement with Vibe Business Services for the Lake Whitney Public Library.
So I believe this is a good news story, I'll start with that. Um, Kristy Rogers with the library. What this is, is a request for the mayor to be able to execute a letter of intent to use the E-Rate program. E-Rate is a federal discount program that covers up to 90% of services for libraries and schools. Our Whitney ISD is already a part of that, they're already on the system, and so that is, um, essentially where our discount rate was sort of measured up to. We already have the contract with Vibe that you all have heard about a couple, three months ago. This is simply because the library billing has to be pulled separate in order to assess this discount. So the only request here is for the mayor to be able to sign this letter saying, yes, Vibe can give us a separate bill for the library in order to apply this discount up to 90%. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to give the mayor the authority to execute an internet service agreement with Vibe Business Services for the Lake Whitney Public Library.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
6:52.